Good evening, we're going to call the meeting to order. This is a voting meeting for the Board of Directors at the Daniel Boone Area School District. Today is Monday, June 17th, and our start time's at 7:30 PM. We'll start with our pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Mr. Wolf, roll call please.
Yes, Mr. Scott. Ms. Obrady?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Dershowitz?
Here.
Mr. Strobel?
Here.
Mr. B. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Wolf here. Mr. Rathkev?
Here.
Ms. Olson?
Here.
Ms. Olson is joining by telephone. And Mrs. Scott?
Here.
See you present.
All right. Procedures for public participation are in the inside cover of your agenda. If you'd like to address the board in any way, just come up to the microphone, sign in, and tell us your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to address the board. Couple of announcements. There was an executive session held prior to tonight's meeting to discuss negotiations and personnel. We do have two agenda edits. Personnel Consent Item A, or I'm sorry, 8. Instead of A to E, we now have A to F, which includes a motion for resignation. And then we also have a financial edit, 11C is an add. Everybody should have that. Any edits on board, from board members? All right, so none. There will be a, an additional executive session following the meeting to discuss negotiations and personnel.
Do they really need one?
Yeah, we do need that. It'll be, it'll be quick, Mr. Dershowitz, I promise. Any presentations from the public on any agenda items?
Church Martino, 225 West Wall Street, Douglasville. Last week, the committee, the whole meeting was held, and that's usually where items to be voted upon are discussed, and that, before decisions are made. Items nine and 10, the finance budget and the taxes, were both on the agenda last week. There was no in-depth discussion, other than Mr. Rathkev reading that they were on the agenda. So, tonight, with a to-be-determined tax rate, can't wait to hear the in-depth discussion. But what I did hear last week was no attempt whatsoever to mercantileize. With continuing declining enrollment, I hear that instead of reducing teachers proportionately, we're absorbing that with what we now call instructional coaches. With continuing declining enrollment, we continue to add administrative positions. And with continuing declining enrollment, one of the positions we added is the third highest-paid position in this district. So very briefly, let me just tell you what you're doing to all the taxpayers of the community, but especially the senior citizens. The senior citizen on social security gets a maximum of $2,800 a month minus taxes. It's a maximum of $2,800 a month minus taxes. So a senior citizen living in Amity Township or Union Township, two months of their social security, or one-sixth of their income, goes toward paying school property taxes. On top of that, last year, social security recipients got 2.9% cost-of-living increase, less than the property tax increase. This year, as projected, they may get 1.5% to 2% call it, come January, for this year's increase in cost of living, not next year's. And yet, even if you raise just to the index, you're looking at 3.1%. And you're talking about 3.7%. So what I'm telling you is we're continually putting senior citizens in this school district in the whole. Thank you. Oh, and I can't wait to hear this in-depth discussion before you decide on a tax rate.
Thank you, Mr. Martino. Any other public presentations?
Good evening, it's Lynn and I, Marsha Wood, Dr. Strobl. I'd like to address the coach positions. But before I do that, I'd like to have you recall last Monday's meeting. There was a gentleman who spoke last Monday about the coach position, the athletic director position, and spoke about the concerns with regard to the detriment that the decision had been made to go from full-time athletic director to full-time. And the way that that has had a disastrous effect on our sports program. Many of you responded empathetically by saying that one cut to that one position, you're committed to restoring the detriment that has done. And I bring that to your attention now, because that's just one cut to one position. And I want you to think back to the last six, seven years of cuts to our academic career. We've lost full-day kindergarten. We had years of devoted elementary on-site work. We lost middle school foreign language. We lost a library position. We furloughed teacher after teacher after teacher. Now, Mr. Rathkev, you often talk about the biggest bang for your buck, right, and how to provide for our students in the most cost-effective manner. I believe Dr. Cooper's model here with instructional coaches is the most cost-effective bang for your buck. Here's why. One in service day can provide a handful of ideas for a teacher, but it's once and done. It's one day. An instructional coach can provide pinpointed, ongoing, day after day after week, specific to the teachers that needed and the classrooms that show that need. This is how we can improve student achievement. If you want to see what the effects of those cuts have had to our educational program, unfortunately, you only need to look at our declining student achievement scores over the past seven years. So if you're committed to improving the value of our student program, I think this is very cost-effectively to do that. Now, with regard to the taxpayer, I'm a taxpayer. Furloughing a handful of teachers might save a handful of dollars, the cost of a cup of coffee perhaps. But if you really want to benefit the taxpayer, what you have to do is increase the market value of your home. And you do that by a vibrant, powerful school district where our kids are achieving, that has a great reputation. And I beg you to not save me a handful of dollars now, because it costs me tens of thousands of dollars in the future with the market value of my home. And I brought with me several teachers today, some of whom are instructional coaches. Not all of them can speak, because they're not residents. But if you have questions regarding the instructional coach program, you're welcome to ask them and permit them to speak now, or speak with them after. But I really think that if you want to continue to restore our programming here, this is a solid step in that direction.
Thank you, Mrs. Strobl.
Hi, I'm Joan Moss, 219 Laura Wood, Dr. Strobl. I've also been a teacher at the Daniel Boone District for 20 years. I've never had the opportunity to work with an instructional coach. I don't know what's happening down the hall. I don't know what's happening grades above me, or grades above, because I'm busy teaching. I think in terms of the best use of our resources and getting the most out of the resources we have now, instructional coaches could help me and could help share across curriculum areas. One example is, we have great technology. We have great teachers. But we don't have that collaboration and communication that I think would make the investments you've already made really much more valuable. I've not worked with an instructional coach, but I know Dr. Cooper has, and we brought him here to make some changes, to increase our scores, and to make it an even better school district. And I think that we should defer and try this, because I'd like to know where my blind sights are. I've been doing this for 20 years, there's always room for improvement, and I think there's things we can all share and collaborate with. So I would encourage you to consider that.
Thank you. Can I share? Yeah, yeah, please. Any other comments from the public?
Hey, Mr. President, I just want to share some research regarding instructional coaches, and how it impacts student achievement learning. We do know that our number-one, single-most impactful item relative to student growth, learning, and achievement is the teacher effect, classroom teacher. And that's deeply seeped in research, particularly Marzano research, who is an individual whose educational research is well-known. Utilization of instructional coaches, when implemented with fidelity, have more impactful results regarding that professional development, professional learning, than the traditional workshop or institutes or conferences approach to professional learning, because it's done during the process of classroom instruction, or regularly scheduled planning time, where observations of teachers in classroom takes place, that provide meaningful and appropriate feedback, at a specific timeframe that that coaching occurs, and allows for teachers, professionals, to engage in meaningful and appropriate discussion with one another about lessons that were just taught. It's more effective than traditional professional learning, because they're integrated within the teacher's day-to-day activities in the school, in response to the active way teachers learn best. We know that improved teacher practice results in an improvement in student growth, learning, and achievement, as indicated previously in my statements regarding the Marzano research, where teacher effectiveness has the most significant impact. So I did want to share that, and I thank you for allowing me to do so, Mr. President.
Thank you. And, and Mr. Martino, I did want to just make one small comment, just, yes, there were some adds in administrative positions, but there are also some removals of administrative positions that offset those. So while I understand your position on adding administration, and while it may seem unnecessary, we took positions that are going to only help our ability for the teachers to teach, but also help the education for our kids, while removing paying for administrative functions like our business office and our transportation department. So I think, you know, while those things don't have any direct relationship to the kids, the new positions will. And so while there wasn't a reduction in that area, there was certainly an offset, which I think is, you know, in the board's mind, money well-spent. So again, I just wanted to mention that. So, any other public comment before we move on to the consent agenda?
Like, I did want to say, from a budget's perspective, we changed the dynamic this year. We, you know very well, spent a struggle of times to get information from a building budget standpoint. We made a decision this year to go to a zero-base budget approach. And Ms. Haynes and Mr. Small, I was here, made very big strides for saving the district a very good amount of money. We realized those savings, and we included them in this budget. Ms. Haynes, I don't, I can't recall off the top of my head, but the number of amount of money we saved, 900?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred, 1,000? We saved for the district. And the class, as we had retirements, people did shift around, but we're trying to keep the class sizes in our guidelines. And as our enrollment has decreased, we, we're also reducing the teacher staff, but we're not replenishing them. So that, that is another savings going forward. And as you know, over the years, the district took a wait-and-see, wait-and-react stance to building maintenance. And it's really come to, to the point where we can't delay. We can't band-aid some of the problems we have. We have some serious issues. And we've increased that funding to 800,000, and we're still within our budget. I think in year two or three, that balance goes negative. So that money's got to come from somewhere. So I think in this case, we did use fund balance. We did realize savings from costs. And we also didn't replenish positions that we didn't need because of enrollment decline enrollment. So I think we did a pretty good job of minimizing costs.
Yeah, I mean, I, the zero base was kind of shocking, actually, because I think we, when the number was presented, I think you would have been surprised yourself at the amount. I think we all, I think we all, over the years, believed there was fluff or excess in the building budgets for expenses. But when they took that much out, I think everyone's reaction initially was, you know, is this even doable? Like, is this realistic? You know, is it our new superintendent, you know, trying to, you know, knock it out of the park and show the board that he's fiscally responsible? You know, there was all these things kind of went through our mind. And so I think there was a bit of a risk assumed that we could pull it off. And, you know, the building leaders and the administration reassured us that they could. But I think the other thing is, we talked about it earlier, was we've, we've kind of pulled the levers that were going to save the district the most money at this point, with the outsourcing of our food services, right, our maintenance, all of which weren't necessarily smooth sailing, and we're still working through those things. The teacher reductions, and at this point, you know, while we're able to reduce head count, I think, you know, consistently over the next few years, it's going to be nickels and dimes compared to some of the savings we had. The one I, the biggest one, I forgot, obviously, was the closing of Birdsboro. We've been able to get some revenue from that building, which has been positive. But at the same time, costs are going up, as you know, Piersers, healthcare, and just general expenses for the district. So I think, you know, the challenge we're facing now is that we don't have any more big-ticket savings ideas anymore, other than trying to reduce our employees where we can. And, you know, while we've done some of that, we've also had to invest in some of those positions for the kids, which is the idea of the coaches and trading out administrative positions for administrative positions that were education-focused. So, anyway, just some perspective. If there's no other comments from the public, we'll move into our consent items.
Make a motion to approve Item 7A through 7F.
Second. Any board discussion?
Consent agenda items 7A through 7F will be unanimously adopted unless I hear motions in the contrary. Hearing none, consent agenda items 7A through 7F are adopted.
I make a motion for personnel consent, items 8A through 8D.
F. As amended.
F, sorry, yes, thank you for the correction, Mr. President.
I'll second. Mr. Miller? Any, any discussion? Mr. Wolf?
Consent agenda items 8A through 8F will be unanimously adopted unless I hear motions in the contrary. Hearing none, consent agenda items 8A through 8 are adopted.
Mr. President?
Mr. President, before we move on, I would like to formally welcome our new Director of Athletics and Activities, who is with us in the audience this evening, Eileen Schmidt. She's in the back corner there, she can wave. I'd like to welcome her into the area. Thank her for joining us this evening.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, I make a motion for 9A and B. Yes, now we get to have some discussion.
Yeah.
All right.
Go ahead. Go first.
You know, over the last several years, there's been a lot of cuts made to the Daniel Boone School District. As mentioned, and I don't mean to continue this, but I didn't get my say, so, you know, we furloughed teachers. We cut the custodial staff and the benefits. We cut middle school languages. We added sports fees. We added club fees. We outsourced food services, and we closed BEC, to name a few. In all those cuts, obviously some of them, we all know where I was on BEC, totally opposed. But in all those cuts, we still look at a district budget that will be negative in two years. So you've made all these cuts over the years, and we sit here today, looking at a district budget that's going to be negative in two years. I think we have an obligation to provide the best education that we can for the students of the Daniel Boone School District. Yes, taxes are a lot of money, I understand that, I pay that as well. But I'd like to see that quality improved. I want to see our test scores improve. I want to see our students achieve more, even the extracurriculars. I think it's, I could honestly say, the education that my children received when they went through Daniel Boone, and it's not a knock on the teachers, was a much better, well-rounded education than unfortunately, I believe, the students are receiving today. My children had, you know, a full session of the elementary banding course. They were able to take languages starting in the middle school, where my son in his senior was able to go to a trip to Germany, speak fluent German, and utilize that language that started at such a young age. My daughter utilized Spanish as she is teaching today. And I just think it's a shame that in less than 10 years, the education that I saw my children receiving at each step of the way, not always perfect, but very good. I don't believe it's the same education that we're delivering to the students today. And I feel very strongly that we need to get back and achieve higher levels. One of the reasons, when we were doing a superintendent search, and Dr. Cooper, in my estimation, rose to the top, because he was one of the only ones that talked about the student that wasn't great in academics. He talked about the student that was average and barely making it, and how we need to reach them and get them to be better. And that really struck a chord with me, because through my schooling in high school, I was one of those students. I don't want to see those students be forgotten, because we just focus on honor, 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 when everyone has potential to be something. And I like that approach. That was one of the things that really stuck out to me. And I just think we have got to make some tough decisions, some tough votes, they're not going to be popular votes. Maybe I don't get elected in two years because of the votes. I'm not going to worry about that tonight. I'm going to worry specifically about how do I get this year's budget balanced, and get us looking towards next year and the year after that? Because at some point, we all know, we see in the books, we run out of money. That's all I'm saying.
As someone who's been on the board now, this is my eighth year, I can be honest, that the first two years I was on the board, we were, the tax increase that was proposed, we wound up drawing a surplus larger than what the tax increase was supposed to be. And, you know, that was, to Mr. Basil's credit at the time, that we really needed to be looking ahead at a five-year budget model. We didn't have that budget model early on. We do have it now, I think we've had it since 2015, I think. So, you know, you can start to see, you know, the effects of not only what our, the buildings, our education, certainly, you know, we did, the boards I was a part of, we did everything we could as far as refinancing our debt. We saved a lot of money refinancing our debt. We made some tough decisions with, you know, outsourcing our food service, I mean, and our custodial maintenance, but we have to realize that we're in the business of education. We're not in the restaurant business, we were never in the transportation business, and, you know, the custodial, if I find the right partner, we did with the food service, I think that would be successful. But I think the, in, I voted for no tax increases, and I voted against no tax increases. So I, as I try to take a pragmatic approach to it, as I start to see the evidence, and I, I trust the five-year budget now. I think, and it's a shame when, you know, you run into folks that, you know, and there may be good reasons why they don't trust it, because it was such a nebulous process over the years. But I think we're to the point where, to Mr. Small and Mrs. Haynes' credit, that the numbers that are in our budget are really close. So I think that when you're looking from a planning model, you have to, have to take that into consideration. And this contract, the budget, we're not looking at, we don't have a contract that we're going to approve with the teachers at this point, so this is the, what you call bare bones, as far as cost standpoint. So I think, like I said, we had to make some tough decisions. Closing Birdsboro was difficult, was the right decision, because we saved 460,000, and then 300,000 of that got reinvested back into the building, because eventually it will be needed, and it just can't sit there and deteriorate. We have some serious things we have to take care of. So just looking at it from a long-term approach, I think we have to look at it as a long-term project for the district in a financial scheme, so that's how I am approaching it.
Yeah, no, I mean, facilities is more than just buildings and doors. And clocks, and clocks. Couple things that come to mind for me are, we had an entire building with not one camera in it. Right? We had a building that had 40 cameras in it, and two-thirds of which didn't work. We had doors that were keyed and propped open for days at a time. We had, people could come in and out of the school and not, not, not be checked, other than walk in the office and sign your name, and that's changing. Like, there's all these things that are happening that require us to spend more money than we did five years ago, and so that's going to continue. And, you know, so I, to think that we could possibly go, like we did however many years ago, was it? Six years we went without raising taxes. And I, I'm quite positive that that board was proud of it, because it's probably, I don't know that it's ever been done before in a, in a school district where they could go six years without raising taxes, but what they did was they created a problem for us, for this board. And while there are some great things that happened to save money, which I voted for, we're at the point where there's nothing left, other than to cut staff. And if anyone in the public, or anywhere in this district thinks that cutting staff is going to balance the budget, they're just delusional, because the costs simply are outpacing any staff cuts we could possibly make. Now, what the board back then should have done, was they should have raised taxes at a very reasonable 2, .2 mils even, .1 mil even. And had they done that, there would have been another million and a half in the budget today, and it's not there. And that would have bought us another three or four years. But it, and I, and I completely understand the position of the seniors, I do, I swear I do. But I, and I am not a just-throw-money-at-the-situation kind of person, because that's what I did for my employer for many years, and so my job was to find ways to save money. And I think the board did a nice job of that over the last five years, much to the chagrin of the public and even some of the staff, and, and some of those decisions haven't worked out ideally, but we're working through them. But again, those, there is no more levers to pull. You know, so I, you know, we're going to be able to balance this year, and we're probably going to be good next year. And then after that, there'll be a new board. And then after that, there'll be a new board and, just like us, we'll be, there'll be a new group coming in, and they'll get to figure out what to do with those taxes at that time. But, so, we have this max bu, not max budget, the budget number that's in this motion, is that current, or does that need to be adjusted? Well, number nine is approve the general fund budget. I just want to make sure that number's right.
That's the expenditures.
That's just the expenditures, right? Okay. Okay, so we don't need to? Okay. So we're good? Is there any more discussion on item nine? I think item 10 is the one, 10 and 11. That's all right. The discussion is really more pertinent to when we get into 10. That's all right. I just want to make sure that 9A is expenses and that that's not going to change per our discussion.
Per our discussion, that will not change.
Okay, okay. Any other discussion on items in the 9 finance budget? So we're going to roll call vote?
And just for clarification, motion was for 9A and B, correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, for motion 9A and B, Mr. Dursen.
Yes.
Mr. Strobel? Oh, sorry. Mr. Beescut?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf, yes. Mr. Rathke?
Yes.
Ms. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Albrecht? Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
All right, now, item 10. Do we have a motion for item 10A?
Yes, I have a motion. I would propose that we have a tax levy at the 32.271.
What was the motion?
Motion is that the tax levy at the 32.271.
Which is how much?
0.0.
0.9.
0.93. 31.3. Okay. 31.78. The allowable max, and now the exceptions.
Do we have a second?
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
So that gets us, that's the max allowable, without exception.
As far as discussion, I agree with a lot of what Mr. Dursen said, and the cuts that are still there from the past, and the issues that we have in program. And also, I just thought, we did have the zero base budget, and we're all happy that we've been able to get rid of a lot of expenses. It's the first year that we're doing that, so we're really running without saving that much, but it's just that that's concerning to me. And as we said, looking even with this tax increase, looking two, three years out, where as a fund balance, there's still a need for this fund balance to balance this year's budget. My conscience, I just, that's what we needed. I'm a taxpayer. I'm paying taxes. I wish somebody would have gone here on board when the school board was raising taxes double digits, right, fifteen years ago. That was an issue that's going on.
Any other discussion on that before we vote? Roll call?
Mr. Beescut?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf, no. Mr. Rathke?
No.
Ms. Olson?
No.
Ms. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Dursen?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
No.
Motion fails. We're going.
All right. Anyone, next, anyone else have a motion? Another idea?
That was a 0.75 increase.
0.75? What's that get us to?
31.584.
Can you hear that, Julia?
Yes, who made that motion?
That was Beverly.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Rathke. What was the increase in, 0.75? Any, well, do we, is there any discussion?
Ms. Haynes, just for clarification, that would be equivalent to $31, $31.58.4 cents per $1,000 on assessed value.
An approximate of $35,49,141 dollars in revenue. And that's before the collection. It's $35,49,141 dollars in approximate value of taxes, however, that doesn't take into consideration that we collect at a 98 percent. That's the full value number.
Any other discussion? Want to go again?
Mr. Beescut?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf, yes. Mr. Rathke?
Yes.
Ms. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Dursen?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Motion passes 8-0.
Mr. President, I make a motion for 11A through C.
All right. Second, Mr. Rathke. That's, C is amended, right?
It's amended.
Any discussion?
Real quick question. How many, how many positions were we, Mr. Dursen, this year? I think we're probably more than nine, right?
Yes, and we actually, we researched that backwards over the period of five years, and we made money by doing this.
And we're pretty actively more than that, right?
Was that?
We're actively hiring. Okay, you're right. Ms. Haynes, I ask the question, since this appeared as an end of agenda edit for, since folks did see it, the motion to approve the transfer of 250,000 to the capital fund from the balance sheet adjustment form, could you provide an explanation?
Yes, this was a running credit balance that sat there in the receivables. There was an accounting thing, we were going back and forth with the auditors, couldn't figure out exactly what it was, but we carried the balance until we could. And, not putting a plug here, but when Skyward came in, it was very evident what the problem was. There was, it was being booked in the wrong account. So we had already accounted for it everywhere else, but the credit just sat on the balance sheet. And this will remove that one-time money off the balance sheet. And my suggestion is putting it in the capital.
Thank you. Sorry. They already said that Skyward paid us money?
Yes, it did. It just paid for inside.
So, might I understand, then, that that was, it was not accounted for in the budget? It was sitting idle in an account?
In the balance sheet account. It's been sitting there, growing. It's been growing for about three years.
All right.
It wasn't that bad.
Just a rapid.
It ended up at 250.
He seconded it, yeah. Okay. Any other discussion on items, items 11A through C? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 8-0.
I'll keep this rolling. I make a motion for 12A through B. A and B.
Any discussion on item 12, A and B? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 8-0. Old, old business, item 13, we have a motion.
I'll break the streak. 13A through 13D.
Do we have a second? Anybody?
I'll second.
Julia got it.
Julia, Ms. Olson? Any board discussion on old business items, A through D? Are we, just a question, maybe unrelated to this, are we amending the minutes from a previous vote? It's not, I don't think it's one of these, I don't believe.
Yeah, this was to show the, to recognize the presentation.
Amended, oh, there it is, okay.
Yeah, to.
Sorry, I missed the word amended.
That was when Mr. Martino presented the presentation to Mr. Small. So he correctly pointed out the bottom of this score, so they then.
He was very clear, he wasn't going to let that happen. All right. Any, any more discussion on 13? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes 8-0. So we have new business and first readings. We have a motion for 14A.
You don't need a motion.
No, oh, we're just, sorry. Any presentations by public on any agenda issues?
Just two quick things, Mr. Scott. I come here, what mileage did we raise the taxes to?
0.75?
No, what?
Oh, 31.584.
And is that above or below the index?
It's below.
Below the index, thank you. The other thing is, listening to your passion speech about what budget's going to be in two years, I think you're pretty much convincing to come on the board again. I knew you'd be happy to hear that.
Well, there's two open seats, Mr. Martino.
I'm thinking it's just for those. He could stay in his basement and then he could.
That's true. Or something out. All right. Any, I think we're, any other board comment?
No.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.